Don't leave.
Yes. Stop off for the meeting.
We're not leaving now.
That's a wild meeting, huh?
We have to call the meeting to order. It is the 29th. We are a day off. This is Thursday. It's 6:45, and let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
I apologize. We are about 15 minutes late, but we've had some network issues that are persisting for some of us, but not for all of us. And we are meeting tonight on the 29th, which is a Thursday, because the high school has seen projects in the building last night on the 28th. So, any changes to the agenda that we need, Dr. Cox?
No.
The summary of non-public actions from May 14th, 2014. Mr. York made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of April 23rd, 2014, as written. Mr. Barka seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. Mr. York made a motion to allow Allison Ely, a special educator at GMS, to rescind her resignation. Mr. Barka seconded. The motion carried 5-0-0. Presentations and recognitions?
None.
We are anticipating one next Wednesday. A recognition.
We hear next Wednesday?
Yes. We moved the 11th to the 4th. Are you not going to be here, Derek?
I guess I'll come. No, I think I am.
Any correspondence? I don't believe I got any. I can't get on the network to see if I got any. Approval of draft minutes from the 14th.
So may I?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed? Upstayed? Thank you. Boy, it's been a long time since I could check off things on the agenda. It's been electronic. Community forum?
Set a monitor.
Yeah, so they can hear you right now.
Good evening. My name is Nathan Cooper, and I am the recently elected president of the Litchfield Education Association. I want to thank Chairman Miller and the members of the Litchfield School Board for allowing me to speak this evening. The Litchfield Education Association is pleased to announce it has conducted its annual elections and chosen new officers for the 2014-2015 school year. A number of our officers from last year chose not to seek reelection, and we thank them for their many years of service, to their colleagues, and to the students of Litchfield. In particular, I hope the Litchfield School Board will join me in thanking Carolyn Late, our outgoing president, for her many years of dedication and hard work. During her time as president, Carolyn helped cultivate a productive and respectful working relationship between the teachers of Litchfield and the Litchfield School District. The LEA has a number of new faces in leadership positions this year, and our members are excited about the fresh ideas and enthusiasm that they bring to the table. I, Nathan Cooper, have been elected president, Stacy Leary, vice president, Deb Langton, treasurer, and Meredith Potter, secretary. The LEA also elected two building representatives from each school. From GMS, we have Inga Mick and Angela LaPlante. From LMS, Jody Corbett and Heather Stein. And from CHS, Erin Brown and Jill Delo. We look forward to continuing a productive and respectful working relationship between the teachers of Litchfield and the Litchfield School District, and we're excited about what the future holds for the students of Litchfield. Thank you very much for letting me speak tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and congratulations on your election, or condolences.
That's what John said, he was a double-edged sword.
It is. It certainly is. Superintendent comments? Hearing none?
We have 15 minutes to catch up. I probably deserve that. Two areas. Congrats to CHS seniors who successfully presented their senior projects last night. I got a chance to see almost all of them, had some great conversation. While there is a range of, within the projects themselves, I think there's tremendous value to the senior project process. There was some students, several students spoke about, you know, the senior project as spurring them in a direction that was very important to them. I'm sure for some it was compliance, but for those students, I'm sure the high school is often an act of compliance on a day-to-day basis. For many, it really was something that I think they'll reflect on well, and were able to speak eloquently to about what they did, why they did it, what they learned about it, how it's, in some cases, how it's changed them personally, in some cases, how it's changed their academic or career path. And, you know, the ability to take on a task, see it through, and do it well, and then report on it and reflect on it, I think is a tremendous accomplishment. The other area is, in the, your documents, it is some excerpts from the minimum standards for public school approval. About every four years, the state board sends out changes. These are very well-betted with a lot of feedback, but at the end, the state board of education really, for them, this is a policy-setting agenda. And this is the policy world that we live in. And I just wanted to highlight some of the areas of change this year. The document itself is about 100 pages, and almost all of the sections of the document start with the sentence, "The local school boards shall ensure that..."
It's local control.
Yes, we're going to tell you, but it's your local control.
In this year, there's an awful lot of ones that say, "The local school board shall require that no later than." So some of the "no later than" are July 1st, 2015, some are 16th, some are 17th. The policy direction that the state board is moving is towards competency-based education, a movement away from seat time, to the development of a broad range of competencies, extended learning opportunities, and not just decoupling credits from seat time, but credits from the notion of what it means to graduate from high school. It doesn't mandate these changes as much as it allows them. One of the things that is required is the development of high school competencies. So one graduates high school not by the accumulation of credit, but by the accumulation of the competencies demonstrated in the courses that got you the credit. That's going to be the most conservative approach. We'll continue to put students through these courses, each course. So your high school competencies are really a compilation of all the course competencies set in a particular context, and so students will go through and check it out. It does also mean that competencies could become the modules for something greater. Education is being modularized from the Carnegie Unit course down into smaller and smaller, more identified, and less time-bound experiences. In many ways, that's a very good thing, in that students who are exceptional at something in a very short period of time learn and demonstrate that learning, and then spend other time going either further in that direction or someplace else. The one reservation that I have about this is that teaching and learning done well in a public school can't be equated to simply the competencies that can be demonstrated in the end of that. There is a lot more to what a student learns about themselves, about work, and about lots of areas that can't be evaluated in all of the competencies, because we sample. We teach all of this, and then we sample these things. So in some cases, I think you can equate the competencies from here to the learning of the course, but in some ways, I think you shortchange the value of those courses. And I think as we move forward in this policy direction, we have to keep that in mind. There is some great and important things about the direction that we're heading, but there's some great and important things about the system as it is as well, and how we morph and take advantage of the opportunities while still retaining that which is best in the existing system, I think is going to be an important process.
So, how do we get insight into that? Like, how do we find out what the competencies are, how they're being implemented? Is that part of the program review, or is that?
Well, that's part of the strategic plan work that we're looking at. So you'll notice in there that we have to write grades, K through A competencies. You'll notice that the, it no longer says, "Students will be promoted from one grade to the next." It just says, "To the next level," implying that you don't need things like grades. You can just modularize it and run a middle school program where you need to do these things by the time you're from here to here. And if you get it done in two years, you could go to high school as a, you know, 12-year-old.
Do you really see that happening, or is that just kind of theory?
We allow it now for truly exceptional students. I mean, when I was in Nashville, the last two years, we had kids taking AP Calculus as freshmen. And we, you know, allow in exceptional cases, though the question becomes, to what extent do you move forward? How do you do it in a way that allows for the opportunity? And recognizing, I think, at the same time, that there's some real benefits to that individualization of experience and learning to learn. If you surveyed computer science teachers in the country and said, "When you don't know how to do something in technology, what do you do?" Google. My guess is that they would have, they would have three answers. One, Google. Two, YouTube. And three would be, ask a student. Nobody waits for the course anymore. Learning becomes a part of everybody's job, and that's the environment that our kids are going to graduate into, that you don't wait for the PD session and sign up for it. You learn how to learn, you know, for an increasing number of jobs. And so incorporating that in a measured way and an important way into education moving forward, I think, is important. So I think that modularization will be a good thing, but it has to be done thoughtfully. And I think that, you know, the human aspect of classrooms and teaching together is important. But we all recognize that it's difficult with a class of 20, 22, 25, to teach to all of those levels and do it well. And there are ways that we can take the best of both of these two systems and make them work. But basically, we'll create it because we have local control. We could choose to change basically nothing and still be compliant. We can require everything to be done through a course, and then when you earn your course, you've demonstrated your competencies. And so competencies equates to credits, equates to high school graduation, but we don't have to do it that way.
Other questions? School board member comments?
Well, last week, we were here for the LMS concerts, and they, so we had choir first, and there was 40, 50 students that I think, or about 40 students, I think, that participated in the choirs for the middle school. And then the fifth-grade band played, and there was 50 students just in that band alone. And then in the sixth through the eighth grade, when they, after they got through playing, they played a song there, there was 83 students. So they tried to put them all together, they would not have been able to fit on the stage, there'd have been 133 students. Plus, there was no room to sit in the auditorium with the fifth-grade band seated with all the other bands and the parents. So, and I think which is very good. I think that that's very exciting. One of the things I know that occurred a few years ago when we, when we made a lot of changes was that we looked to change the music teacher, the choir teacher at LMS to a co-curricular class, it was after-school. And I think that the administration in the LMS should begin to undertake the process of looking at whether that could be a part-time position back into the LMS school for the simple reason that it meets after-school when available, as she was explaining, instead of part of the curriculum. And again, you know, I think we do a lot for our sports and not so much for our arts, and I think that this, I think it's time for us to begin to look at putting a halftime teacher back into LMS for the choir. So I would hope that they would look at that and come back with it, and the board can decide what's the best way to go about getting that position refunded into the, into the school system.
On May 15th, I attended the Mr. CHS, what do you call it? Pageant. And I have to commend the 12 brave young men who volunteered to be contestants. It was, it was really great. It was funny. There was some wonderful talent, funny kids. It was, it was just fantastic for a good cause. It was for raising money for members of the Campbell community in need of assistance. I'm not quite sure how much money they raised, but there were quite a few people there. And so if you ever have an opportunity next year, when they do it again, you should definitely go and watch. It is very, very funny. Talented kids in so many different ways, and they were just fantastic for them to, and it really required a lot of bravery. So I think they were just fantastic.
I actually wanted to echo what Mr. Cooper said and thank Carolyn for her service to the district. I know, on the negotiation team, we worked closely with her, and I worked very closely with her afterwards to help, you know, educate the community, help get the contract passed. She was always nothing but professional. She always had the student's best interest at heart, and, you know, I deeply respect her for that. So you've got big shoes to fill, so good luck to you.
And today's HLN had several extremely positive comments about the concert, and she was named specifically and congratulated in at least one of those comments.
So based on John's comment, we're probably going to see Rental of the Verizon, the LMS band.
Yeah, I was going to say.
For next year.
For next year.
So, you know, it's a busy time of year across all the schools, and I, again, encourage board members to take advantage of whatever you can take advantage of. I went because of a personal interest, but I go every year anyway, to the Academic Excellence Banquet for the students with a 3.92 or higher. There was, I believe it was 17 students in a very full house at Valentino's. For those that don't know, the students invite a staff member. It could be an admini, I guess it could be an administrator, teacher, coach, someone that's had an influence on their time here at Campbell, to speak on behalf of them. And again, this year, they asked the students more or less to say why they chose this person to speak for them. And it's always interesting to see the connection. There were at least two instances where a student selected someone that they didn't have a class with, but it was an extracurricular activity, or a field trip, or something where this student and this staff member made a connection that persisted throughout and grew to the point where they, you know, they were a mentor or a confidant of that student during the school day through the school year, where they didn't even really have them in a class, which I think just speaks volumes about, you know, the connection that gets made between teachers and students, or staff members and students is extremely important in how students approach their education. And if they have somebody at school that is their go-to person, which I think is what they're selecting, it makes a big difference. And I want to echo Dr. Coaten's comments. I went through the senior project displays last night. I probably talked to 90-plus percent of the kids for anywhere from 30 seconds to five minutes, depending upon their level of engagement. And you could see some kids were just really excited to talk about what they had done. It was, there was a bunch of that were dealing with nursing, a bunch that volunteered at retirement homes, for lack of a better word, that wanted to go into nursing or some kind of hospice-type care things, students that did something just because they were interested or wanted to learn more about it. There was, there was one girl, one student, she was really interested in nutrition, so she taught herself how to cook and wrote a cookbook. There was, there was two students that wrote physical books, that they, they printed them themselves, and they, they had them stapled, so they weren't published, but one was a history of Litchfield, the second one escapes me. But it was, it was like picking up, you know, a hundred-page book.
It's a science fiction novel.
A science fiction novel. We're like picking up a hundred-page book.
I want to read the book, but it wasn't ready yet.
And I said, so the one that did the history of Litchfield, I said, I mean, I would say, "Go to the Historical Society and see if they'll print 100 copies of that and sell them for a buck or five bucks at Town Hall as some kind of fundraiser, because you clearly put a lot of effort. It's very well done." So it's, every year, I'm amazed at what kids do and how they get interested. I always asked, "What was your trigger to do this, and what was the hardest thing that you had to do?" And she said the hardest thing was interviews. Interviewing the people, knowing what to ask.
Oh, my God.
And knowing what to ask, and then how, how to put that into the book. So again, I think it's, there's some students that do some outstanding work out there, and it's an opportunity to recognize them, so. And I know the schedule's full from now through the 20-whatever of June, so. And I'm sure graduation will be outside, and it will be hot in the LMS gym for promotion ceremony.
If I can just take a moment, I'd like to wish good luck to all our schools and on the Great East Music Festival.
Oh.
I know in the past, our schools have done very well, and I know GMS in particular does very well at this, so good luck to them. Hopefully, they'll have good weather, because then they go to Key and be Lake Catholic.
Oh, that's the key.
Would you like to return?
Frank would second that.
If I could, I would.
Business administrators report. Mr. Markowitz.
Thank you, sir. The first will be the financial report for month ending in April 2014, and I provided you with kind of a quick overview, if you will, of where we are relative to revenues and expenditures in the general fund. Basically, there are two areas in revenue that I'll bring to your attention. One is, and it is an agenda item to discuss, is the LGC refund. If you recall, the district received two substantial, one greater than the other, substantially greater than the other, refunds from LGC due to past year over invoicing by LGC to the districts for health and dental, excuse me, insurance premiums. When we restated the revenue projections that would due September 1st to the Department of Revenue Administration, we did not have a solid figure yet from LGC as to what the refund was going to be, so consequently, there was no projection of revenue. And there was a bit of an offset in the budget that was done by the previous business administrator relative to where he thought the refund may come in, and actually lowered the expenditure amount by that, but didn't anticipate the revenue piece. In discussion with the auditors, I asked if we could actually take that refund and use it to offset our direct expense, and they said, "No, you must recognize it as revenue." So you will see in the revenue statement, other revenue, we are over a substantial amount of dollars, and that is contributed to the LGC refund that was not stated in our projections back in September. The other piece that is very difficult to project is Medicaid reimbursement of students that are eligible for such reimbursement. It really is, you look at last year's actual, and you get a sense as to the student population that may be eligible for the district to file for reimbursement. And as you can see right now, we're about $57,000 over projection there. So those two elements contribute to the majority of where we're at today relative to substantially over-projection on our revenues. On the expenditure side, right now, we're about $694,000 underspent, under appropriation. However, we have to deduct some areas from that to bring it down to a net value, and as you can see under expenditures, we've deducted close to $146,000, which were budget amendments that were brought in as encumbrances from previous year. Special education is right now tracking at an underspend of approximately $126,000, and 30, almost $39,000 is attributed to self-funded balance. Self-funded balance is, revenue is directly offset. They've underspent their, their self-funded, so that it will show also on the, on the revenue side. So again, the, it's a, it's a big number, but we still have a month to go, and as historically happens, the facility directors, they squirrel their money away for probably a good 10, nine, eight, nine months of the school year because of history of unanticipated expenditures that may come up. So there's a good portion of that will be spent down through priority items that the facilities directors, for the most part, have withheld, and now they're, they're kind of playing catch-up that last month. And then I also provided you with the executive summary, and it has the, as requested, previous meetings, some of the balances, and I also provided you with the last board packet, the backup documentation relative to student activity funds.
Dennis, can we request of the administration for our next meeting that they...
That's only a week away.
I understand.
Okay.
They should have been thinking this for long term, but however, they need to bring to us next Wednesday for a discussion if they have any recommendations for encumbrances of funds, because we cannot have that conversation on our last meeting in June.
So much fun, though.
Yes, I understand, it's a lot of fun. But I think it would be much more fun to at least have a conversation on it on the 4th and then be able to vote on it on the 2nd.
If they, if they're going to ask for it.
If they're going to ask for it, because...
I think that's, that's fine if there's a need for an encumbrance, which I don't know that there is, but...
How much, do we know what the projection is? I just heard you say, what was it?
For?
End of year.
Well, you've got to be careful of end of year, because a big chunk of end of year is going to be unanticipated revenue, which...
Which you can't use, yeah.
Can't use.
No, I mean, just, I mean, I know that $50,000, they have to decide whether or not there's going to be the $50,000 to fund the warrant article.
I don't think that's an option.
Well, I understand that. No, 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 I understand that. But, I mean, but then they, you know, I mean, there, there are, there may be some things that can be moved forward.
Yeah.
And we need to look at that, just for the simple reason that, you know, there was a $170,000 difference, and if there's an opportunity to make that, that decision, then the board ought to have an opportunity to have that conversation and make that decision.
We know that there's, there's some needs out there, things that have been reflected in the budget in this year and past years, and it's very similar to the, the site manager situation, where, you know, people have been, have been holding out. English textbooks would be one, that, you know, I mean, it's something, in this case, it's not new material, it's re-binding of used textbooks, but, but, you know, they would have liked to have it done last year, and then you're sort of caught in that, that short period of time between, we need to play it safe, and then we need to spend. So hopefully, we'll be able to not spend down the budget, but actually spend the budget, have enough time to spend the budget on the things that it was allocated for. And, you know, I don't think we're going to have to go looking for very much additional stuff to spend on, if we actually do a good job of spending it on exactly what it is.
And that's, and that's fine. It's just that, I don't want to be, you know, getting halfway through the year and we didn't take a, take a look at it, and I, and again, we've had enough of a battle that we know it's just not worth bringing it up and discussing it one night and voting one night. It's just, we can do it, but it's, you know, it's just not worth the thought.
So if, if you anticipate any needing an encumbrance, can you just have a brief description?
Yeah, just by point of clarification, that, I mean, we're still encumbering.
No, 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 if you, if you're going to, so...
Encumber something.
I'm just going to say, you're going to...
Encumber forward for this year.
We decide we're going to resurface the track.
Right, okay.
And we can't do it before the end of June, which, by the way, we're not doing for anyone.
Bad example, but...
Just an example.
Choice of an attention-getting agenda.
We would encumber past to expend.
I understand.
That's what John, I think, is targeting.
We can bring those forward.
Could we do any of the computer lab? That wasn't next year's budget? That obviously isn't because of the...
We, we already have started ordering some of the equipment, again, because it wasn't in the default budget.
Yeah.
But yeah, we need to put it in the budget, seeing where we have a teacher approved through the warrant.
Yeah.
We've already started some of that work, and I believe the equipment will come in prior to, and we just got a quote in today. It may be a stretch for us, because the room that's being converted is currently a classroom, but we need to do some construction work in there to get some electricity in there for the air conditioning. So some of that stuff, and it's going to be a short summer. We've got a lot going on this summer, so it's well justified if we can do some of that work before the end of the fiscal year, specifically in the... specifically in the, in the area of the GMS computer lab, so.
Because by the time you get to the end of classes and then you do your two or three days of post-class, you're, you're eight weeks out-
Right.
From starting-
Right.
School again.
Well, not classes starting for the kids, but bringing staff in for orientation and whatever you need from the start of the year. It really, people think it's 12 weeks. I would say, oh, you get 12 weeks for summer. No, you're down to eight weeks.
And then we got folks trying to take vacation time typically during the summer. We asked them not to take during the school year. So it's, it's really a compressed summer for us to get these things done.
And when you get to the building and grounds, particularly at the high school, they're down to six or seven weeks because-
Right.
Athletic starts the second week in August usually, so it's, it really is compressed.
I think Wednesday, August 13th, if that's a correct date, the Wednesday of that week is the new teacher orientation week. Because the feedback that we've got from new teachers in the past is that when we have it, you know, five days or six days before the start of the school year for everybody else, they don't have enough time to digest. And they were saying, oh, gosh, if we could have had this a week earlier. So actually, you know, all of the, the new employees will be in the second full week of August.
How much was the sidewalk at GMS that we pulled out with the drop-off list? How much?
Three.
No, the sidewalk.
Fifteen, three?
No, that was like fifteen.
Twenty thousand, wasn't it?
Fifteen, twenty. But all I need is to-
Are you putting up the barriers there? Are we putting up the barriers this year? That's some of the work that, that we've-
Because I was, I know the barriers were in the budget too. He wanted barriers for the playground too, I believe.
But there was the other piece of paving at GMS.
Yeah, this piece of paving, which would give it the needs of the barriers.
The other part of the parking lot.
Yep, that we did, where you extended and fixed that, the, I'm going to say at the outermost part.
But there's the drop-off loop with the sidewalk.
We did that last summer, yeah.
Yeah, so-
Which I think was the 20,000.
So that's another item.
That could be another item that, that we take-
And that's something you could clearly do over the summer.
Right.
Just an FYI, with respect to the GMS, the plastic retainers.
Yeah.
There's a conversation internally about whether or not that was the best way to go. It's going to be very labor-intensive. Things like that have a way of disappearing over time, so they'd have to be put out every morning, brought back in, chained, snow plowing in the winter. And, and so given the fact that we're not over-capacity in our maintenance and facilities, we looked at essentially transferring that into a four-foot-high fence along that run with a, a gate and the constable at the same. And I believe the PTO at GMS offered to make up any difference between the, what was the original number and what additional we needed to make it into a, a structure that was a, a labor-intensive.
I think you need to, if you're going to put that out in that, in the parking lot, the fence, like it is now, like you better talk to the fire department because you're going to squeeze that spot.
We have included the town people in the conversation. But we haven't had a, we're not in a kind of, at a final decision yet.
A big concern that came up though during the meeting, and we addressed it with Scott Thompson, is he talked about locking the gate on the weekend. And you can't, we explained to him just the much of the need for parking here. That, you know, between baseball-
That's a gate like on the parking lot.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, yeah. That'll go over, that won't go over well.
No, because between baseball, between the two baseball fields and the four soccer fields, depending what type of soccer-
So, so, but the other question was, what are you going to do where the parents are dropping off their, their students?
That work was-
That's not going to be effective.
The night out, the-
No.
Okay.
That'd be the sidewalk, right?
Jack Mancinero has, has finalized the plans and I believe has forwarded them to Matt and we're looking to act on them in the very near future.
Okay, so there is, so we're still looking to, I think it worked very well because I know the couple of times that Kylie, or my daughter, or whoever, decided to prolong her morning, that it tended to go much faster with four cars unloading and one car unloading. And, and it did seem to move the, the process much, much, much smoother through that. But it was still just a couple of-
Just quite an eyesore right now.
Yeah.
It's not very nice.
Just wait till you have to sit in the drop-off line at CHS.
Is there one?
Oh, yeah, there's a drop-off line every morning.
Like teenagers, just push them over.
Well, you see, whatever-
See the stuff they have to get out with at the high school?
It was funny because whenever I, I brought up one of the four exchange tubes to drop them off here, I always made them kind of like 7:10 or 7:50. So I dropped them off first and there's never ever a line.
No, there's not. If you get here at 7:25, it's all over.
You're stunned, man.
You're sitting out on Albuquerque.
You're standing at the stand side.
Drop off at Talent Road, drop the hoof in.
Anything else in your report? Do you want to highlight or?
That piece, no, that's, yeah.
Any other questions?
Frank, you mentioned you cannot expense, expenditure on expected revenue. That would be the LGC, correct?
Yeah, well, I guess the easiest explanation says is at the start of the year, we always project revenue to equal, obviously appropriation, approved appropriation. If revenue comes in higher than that, even if we spent every dollar that we were appropriated, all that extra money, we cannot spend. You cannot spend more bottom line than you appropriated. So-
So would that, would that mean that that amount?
At a minimum.
Okay, and how about as far as Medicaid?
Same.
So at a minimum, then we're talking-
Those two pieces will drop to the bottom line as unassigned, unassigned fund balance. Yep.
And they'll be used to offset taxes next year.
Right.
With Medicaid this year, I mean, it's always an educated guess about how much we will get back. We know roughly how much we'll, we'll bill, but we depend on parents to sign off on allowing us to bill for them. And so, and how much of it is, is covered by Medicaid and how much is not. So you have to, have to be a little bit conservative. And then about the time we were setting the, the budget, we had a group come out and start to advocate that parents not sign off allowing schools to be reimbursed. And we didn't know how much that was going to impact us, so we were a little bit more cautious this year. And some, some districts are reporting that it's impacted them significantly and others not so much. I think we're closer to the not so much.
Right.
So minimum going back to town at this point is about $350,000.
Not that high.
No.
No.
Well, it has to be, well, it'd be, not 226, but 60, so it'd be-
I'm sorry.
Upper, upper 200s.
Yeah. Because that's-
Based, just based on the revenue piece.
That's just based on the revenue.
Right, and then if you underspend on the appropriation, it will add to that number.
Right. But I'm saying 350 because LGC alone is 225.
No, part of that money went back to the teachers, like 65,000, right?
Right, right.
Back to the teachers.
So 228 is the number.
Right, right.
Plus a 60.
Yeah, that was the gross amount that we received. Then from that, we made our distributions to staff and retirees. It was, it, the refund was, the base years was, I believe, 2011, 2012. So anybody that we had deductions for health insurance, we had to make a refund to.
So they took a change.
Yeah, yeah. And I believe there's another one coming. August, September, this, there's a third refund that we're unaware of. It's been coming out in bits and pieces and we're just informed that there's going to be another refund, small amount. The other two were, by comparison, much larger than the third.
Where did we come out with catastrophic aid?
Right to the dollar.
Right to the dollar? Okay. I know we were, there was some question-
Yeah, it was, it was fluttering around. They were looking at, one point, they were talking about 70%, but the projection we made was almost right to the dollar.
Dead River EFT payment.
Backing up fiscal year '15 budget.
Oh, sorry.
That's okay. Only because I'm not, I don't have that on my screen yet.
It was intended, so I, yeah, okay.
Provided-
We need to cover that.
Yeah. Provided to you in your board packet is the fiscal '15 board that we're recommending to the board for adoption as the, the budget, operating budget for the general fund, based on, and I provide you with a, basically a, a kind of a overview again of how the operating budget was determined for this year. As you can see with the government memorandum, the general fund, the, on the ballot was the 19804-987, which was our recommended through the Budget Committee, operating budget for the school district. And as you know, the default budget was approved for the 19631-083. Warrant Article II, which was the teacher contract, was approved. That's added to the operating budget. Warrant Article III was the part-time GMS computer teacher that was approved, added to the budget. Warrant Article IV was the $50,000 transfer to the Capital Reserve Fund that was approved, added to the budget. And warrant Article V, 36700, was for the security and, and safety updates and installation of external access for the three schools. So that left, it gives us a total operating budget of 19956-828. And I provide you with a couple of charts and, and overview by comparison of some of the major components of the, of the budget. And obviously with the approval of the teacher contracts, there's an uptick in the salaries from 51% to 53% for 2015 and employee benefits. Again, as, as Dr. Cochran mentioned earlier, we had a substantial uptick of the cost of employee benefits this fiscal year through changes and life changes of, of staff that came forward to make increases to their, their cost of health insurance. Everything else, for the most part, purchase services, supplies, property, other are pretty flat. Other went down substantially due to the reduction of the bond for next year, the bond principal and interest. So again, it leaves us with an operating budget of the 19,000,956-828 for the operating budget. The way we put together the operating budget was basically to take the recommended budget, fund the Budget Committee made. We made all the changes, we kept, retained all the changes, if you will, that the school board had made, that the Budget Committee made, and then we needed to make some reductions to get down to the default number. So the process pretty much flowed from, again, the school board recommended budget to the Budget Committee recommended budget. And then we made the, administratively, we made the reductions to bring it down to the, to the operating amount of the 19956-828.
So salaries and benefits are up to 75%.
Right, they went up.
It was always about 73 before.
73 and then, yep, we had an uptick in the, in the salaries and, and obviously benefits with all of the changes that came about in addition to those that we had projected with the teacher contract, even though there was a cost savings built in. The district incurred this year a lot of changes in salary and benefits.
Jean's not here, but she was trying to get her hands around our budget and I sort of told her it might be a little bit easier if she got a hard copy. So if you guys could print out a hard copy and put it in a book for her for maybe the next meeting. So I told her it would be, it's a little easier to begin the reviewing and educating your process on the budget when you're sitting in front of it as a hard copy than, than it is flipping through it on your computer. So if you, if you guys could get that.
I'd recommend that we even break it down as we deal with the Budget Committee so that she can see the different segments. It might be easier to chunk it that way.
Yeah.
We can do that. I say we, as I'm looking down to Michelle. Right, Michelle? We can do that tomorrow.
I thought you were going to say that she should be the Budget Committee rep.
No, no, I, I, yeah.
So again, just a reminder to the board, as you know, it's a bottom-line budget and I'm sure throughout next year, we'll be making a good number of changes depending upon what we can do this year and take and, and move forward and make those changes accordingly. It'll be a challenging year.
They're going to make you a hard copy of the 2015 budget for next week.
And he's going to ask for an increase in the copy of your budget because of that.
We'll, we'll have it done at one of the other schools.
Just go over and use the lights.
We'll look at our accounts.
Any questions on the budget or the detail that's provided? So when I look at purchase services, some of that's required, some of it's-
Yes.
I'm going to say discretionary, for lack of a better word. We may decide to-
Some of it's in the buildings, grounds area through plumbing, electricians, that sort of thing. A good chunk of it is in the special ed area.
That's what I was going to say.
Yep.
I think a big part of that is required.
Is required. Right, those would be IEP-related services.
Where, you know, we've always bandied about, you know, 75% of our budget is locked up.
Right.
It's really probably closer to 85%.
It's greater than that.
Is either in staff costs or in IEP-required-
Exactly. If you look at, if you look at truly discretionary appropriations in your budget, you're probably looking at 10%. 10 to maybe, maybe you could stretch it to 13 to 15.
I mean, I'm even looking at, at property, if, in 2015, if it's $235,000, which is 1%.
Right.
Much of that's not, not discretionary.
It's insurance.
It's the maintenance of your facilities.
Maintenance of your facilities, utilities. I mean, so really, when you're looking in a-
Photo property contracts.
Yeah? Very little of it is truly discretionary.
Spend a lot of time at the Budget Committee then for 10%.
Yeah, we do. I wasn't going to say that, but.
I mean, the Budget Committee sometimes takes the position, we're just, we're going to cut 5% from your, your benefits line, from your health insurance line or your-
Right.
Whatever line because that's what we believe is going to happen.
Well, and you saw this year, we were less than 1% differential on the budget to actual for salaries and benefits. That's, that's-
Close.
That's way too close. We're making sure everybody stayed healthy and didn't have any babies and doing those other things.
Easy, Frank.
I know. I'm treading lightly on that, though.
Something that watered at GMS then.
Yeah, I know, I know.
Can we go to the Dead River EFT?
Yes, now we can. Yes. Again, I provide you with a copy, a memorandum, if you will. As you know, we put out certain utilities to bid utilizing the service of a third-party broker. And we were able to negotiate, I feel, a rather favorable one-year fixed-price contract for our oil through Dead River Company. We were able to, a lot of times, oil companies will not negotiate a 12-month contract with you. They will not lock in because of the volatility as well as the spike in price that can occur during the winter. However, the company that we use, Access Energy Group out of Massachusetts, did a real nice job. They actually put it out to, they call it refresh, which my interpretation is it's just a rebid. The first prices that came in, I wasn't real happy with. There were some that were fixed, some that were indexed, so they're not really fixed. Some had taxes included, some did not. So it was all over the place. So I asked them if they wouldn't mind refreshing at no cost to the district, which they did. And we actually obtained a lower rate from Dead River. We saved about three cents a gallon by going out to rebid. It's a fixed price for the entire 12-month period. It also includes taxes. So we have, we have committed to 40,000 gallons between the two schools, which if you look at trending, we will blow through 40,000 if we have any kind of weather like we did last year. And then there's also a stipulation in there, if we need to buy more, then it will be indexed. And if we haven't used all 40 by the end of next June, we stay, we negotiated an additional month. So we would have the month of July, if you will, to top off the tanks and use the total 40. I don't foresee any problem of the district using $40,000.
Gallon.
$40,000 gallons, I'm sorry. I gave you indication as to, because it was a default and I was really being optimistic as to what we were able to, the trending for utilities and specifically in oil is that it's going to go down next year. And that's part of the service that Access Energy Group provides us with, the trends and forecasts and so on and so forth. So as you can see, I was optimistic that we were going to be, come in a little bit lower. I budgeted the two schools at a little over three dollars a gallon, three dollars and a penny. So there is a variance, if we use all forty thousand gallons that we just committed to, will be approximately forty-three, forty-four hundred dollars over budget. We've already put the facility directors on notice that they'd have a frugal year with oil. That doesn't mean not to heat the buildings as we need to, but just be cautious, and I think we'll see a better year, too, out of GMS, as you know, we had that problem with the boiler there. Break even for the contract based on the budget is if we use a little over thirty-eight and a half thousand gallons, we'll break even on what we budgeted for oil. So that is a very optimistic view going into the year. What I would like to be able to do is Dead River has offered us a two cents per gallon discount if we pay within ten days, net thirty, and that's never been a problem for us, our previous vendor for fuel oil, we would pay as soon as the invoice came in, however, we didn't receive it, did not receive a discount for that, and they did accept our P-card, MasterCard. Dead River, we're having discussions with them, they would rather not have us pay by P-card, MasterCard, because that, they incur costs on that and on the processing. They would rather us utilize an EFT, electronic fund transfer, that we just simply, almost like a wire from us to them. That way, they avoid the processing costs of the MasterCard, and we get the payment to them within the ten-day period. It's not a whole lot of money, but it is, in a tight budget year, it's eight hundred dollars, so if we can save. The problem I have, however, is that I would need the ability or the authorization from the school board to go ahead and make that advance payment prior to potentially a manifest being approved. It would still come to you via a manifest, you'd still see it, but I would need the authorization to go ahead and effectively pay that invoice before the manifest is approved by you folks.
And so you're paying the whole thing, the whole year upfront that we're doing?
No, 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 it would come in on invoice.
Okay.
So in other words, they would drop, they'll be dropping at both locations at the same time, we get delivery slip. It's amazing to deal with this oil company, as you know, we had some problems with the previous regarding a gravity feed delivery, they were doing pump, which really put us at a risk of potentially overflow. When I asked Dead River about that, they, their response was, but of course, how else would we drop seven thousand gallons at a locale without doing gravity? They will leave a slip, we'll verify the amount delivered, and we'll make payment. So it'll be on invoice, on delivery, so, no.
They're a much bigger company than.
I believe so, yeah. We actually, I thought we'd get more bids, we actually only got, received four bids from oil companies. And just to give you an idea, they were all over the place, they went from three dollars and sixteen cents, the first time we received a bid was three dollars, the low was three dollars and sixteen cents plus taxes, to as high as three dollars and twenty-fourth cents, and that's what was referred to as all-in, meaning that was including taxes. So then we refreshed the bid and we got, we got more favorable.
So if the prices go down, I take it our prices don't go down?
Fixed-price contract.
Yeah, so it's, we're committed to it.
Yep, it's similar to residential, they offer the same programs, just on a higher scale, obviously, with us, to make a commitment, we get a deeper discount, to commit to purchasing forty thousand gallons.
So Frank, I don't know how that reconciles with the RSA that says we won't pay anything before the school board authorizes it. The treasurer won't pay out anything until the school board authorizes it.
Right, well.
So I understand the need, but I know.
The treasurer would have to authorize me.
But she can't authorize the pay, well, the treasurer, whoever that might be, can't authorize the payment until the school board signs off, according to RSA, that's under the treasurer's duties. So I understand the desire to save money, but I don't want to do something that might potentially run afoul.
How does that happen with payroll, or is that different? Because we don't always sign payroll.
I think that was always an issue, I thought we resolved that, though, by having the, it was something to do with the treasurer's availability versus the school board signing off on the.
Because payroll is just automatic, because.
The treasurer would actually have to institute the EFT, I couldn't call the bank.
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, the treasurer could rightly say, I can't make this payment because I don't have authorization from the school board, who controls?
But similar to payroll, that is EFT, there are direct deposits, EFTs going through.
So I wonder, I mean.
I can find out.
What would be more amenable to me personally is if we just said, can we chunk the expected forty thousand up over twelve payments? We'll pay ahead in the summer, we'll pay you whatever, you know, whatever we need to pay you, thirty-five hundred dollars, starting in July, August, September, October, and we're gonna, kinda like a budget plan.
Actually, about ten grand of them.
Not to get to forty grand over twelve months.
Hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I'm sorry, I'm thinking, I'm forty thousand, you set me up with the forty thousand. No, and then when we get to April or May, you do some kind of reconciliation and say, yeah, we had a bad winter, it's gonna cost you more, or you're ahead of the game and you don't need to, you don't need to make a payment in June.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with that, I mean, I don't know, I can't see them saying no to not getting our money.
Ahead of time.
Four months in the hand, and have forty thousand dollars in their, in their kitty, so.
Do you want my business approach to come out now?
Sure. It's what we pay you for.
It, I'll remind you as a board, had we done that last year, we could have found ourselves in a tough predicament, paying forward to an oil company commodity. As a former banker, volatile market, I don't know Dead River, is it a bigger company than a farmer? It could be, it couldn't be, I don't know what's going on operationally, I'd rather pay on delivery, knowing that we have the product, we have value for the money putting out for the district, paying ahead, I'm not sure I could endorse that.
All it is is, I mean, it's eight hundred dollars.
I'd rather just pay them, do the thirty-day process then.
I just don't wanna run foul of.
I understand, I totally understand.
Like a blanket approval for this particular expenditure, and just say that all.
I'll look into it, I'll, I'll get a, I'll look at.
The treasurer can say no.
Yeah, I mean, it comes down to signing on the manifest to pay the bill, and that's basically.
We've got some time, because I just wanted to bring it to your attention, A, the contract, and B, we're not gonna be probably taking a delivery, we're pretty well stocked up with oil right now, so I don't anticipate that we're gonna be utilizing.
Another option, I don't know if it changes anything, is to do something into some kind of escrow.
Right.
You can pay, we can authorize the payment into an escrow account that you guys could pay out, and then you can do your, your net, ten days or thirty days or whatever.
And the other piece, too, they haven't shut the door yet on the use of the MasterCard, so we still, that still may be an option for us, which if that's the case.
They'd probably get hit with three or four percent on that.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, it's give us half that, two percent back.
Probably not that high, probably about two percent.
I don't know what they're doing for volume through the MasterCard, but.
But it, you know, it has an impact on us, because we get money back on that purchase.
Right.
So the question.
But it may net a loss to us if we.
What if we paid three twenty-three a gallon because we knew we were getting that back?
We'll find some other place to save the eight hundred.
No, I just wanna make sure that we're lined up with.
Yeah, I want it to be clean, too, and I totally agree with that piece.
Also, I think the idea that we've locked in a price for our oil, you know, who knows, may go down, and, you know, if it does, then it does, but.
And I think if you sent out an email and said, hey, can you come in and sign an oil manifest, and we have ten days to sign it?
Yeah, it may not happen, we may get on cycle with them, and I can actually ask for their auto deliveries that give us somewhat of a cycle that we hit the school board meetings.
Especially during the winter, when we get together more often.
Yep.
Every week.
So at least for that month or two month.
Ryan has two, two times.
All right, so it's a non-issue, I get it. So that's Dead River, that's one piece in the budget that we're pretty happy to put aside.
LGC refund, anything else you wanna cover?
No, I pretty much covered that in the.
Stephen Forbes?
I'm working on paper copies, too, because I can't.
You can't connect?
No. Again, a cover memorandum, I was busy writing memos to you folks about, as you know, warrant article five, approved the amount of thirty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars for the upgrade of the Forbes external access here at Campbell Inn for the installation of a Forbes access at GMS and LMS. And I kinda wanted to give the board a little background of how we're proceeding on this project, so that you're aware of where we're going, and to the extent that some of this work will be completed prior to the end of this fiscal year, and then it will be a summer project spending the thirty-six, seven in the budget for the specific purpose of the external access Forbes program. I won't read through this, but phase one basically requires, in order to utilize a Forbes system the way it's intended, we need to secure buildings. And the first phase, if you will, will be to rekey all three buildings, so that there is one master key in the district for all three external access locks. That will require going around, and again, we've already, Kyle and Matt and myself, we've already gone around with a couple of vendors, looked at all the external entry points, and all of those, as well as all the other entry points, emergency entrances, all the entrances to all three schools will be rekeyed, so that we gain control at the SAU level on all three buildings. And then obviously you can see that the keys, because there is a Forbes, the Forbes program is intended for staff to be authorized and utilizing the Forbes program, so we know who's coming and going in the building. And I've given you an outline of the, who will have key access to those, all district keys, if you will, and we're actually gonna key it in such a way that some individuals, some positions, it will only work for their particular building as far as the building principal and assistant principals go. After that's completed, obviously, phase two, through Kyle, was this is his area of expertise in looking at the platform that would be required, he's recommending, and I've given you the backup, some of the documentation on this particular program, this is the, it's called Intellisight ES, it's, again, not fully understanding, but the capability of this program and this platform will give us the ability to enhance the Forbes access program going forward, it has enhancement ability to it. Right now, right now, anybody that's issued a Forbes can use that to gain entry to whatever building they're assigned to. This new platform will allow Kyle to actually do things like restrict when they can use their Forbes, what time of day they can use their Forbes, what day of the week they can use it, has a lot more capability, both internally and external access, so that this is a program that he is recommending that we can build upon. I've given you the financial breakdown, and as you can see.
Just trying to go back to the locking thing, real quick. So if somebody has a Forbes, and they wanna come into the school on a weekend, you know, a teacher or administrator or somebody who doesn't have a key, are they able to get into the school with a Forbes? If they don't have a key?
They would also need the security code if this building was locked down.
Okay, and then how is this gonna impact the rec department's use of LMS and GMS during the winter?
It will allow us to be aware of it and.
Don't have them getting any keys.
Permit it or not. You can, so if you have external access through the key fob, right, which is actually not gonna be Forbes, it's gonna be a card, a chip.
Right.
So you can program a key to work on Friday night between four and eight p.m., and that time and that time only. So it'll allow you to designate what swipe card will work when and where. At this point in time, that will only be true on external doors, but it could be true also on internal, if we upgrade at some point in time. So it means that someone who has a key that's, you know, we're aware of, they're running a program on Friday night, and they decide just to stop by on the school on a third, random Thursday night when nobody else is around, they wouldn't have access, but they would have access to that which they've approved and applied for. And it gives us better control, we know who has it, they can't duplicate it. And down the road, for example, LMS access, if you can, if we upgrade this over time to handle wings of buildings, then we can give access to a wing of the building and no more, to a particular group at a given day and time, and it could be limited, and it can be programmed and reprogrammed on the fly, so.
It's, the essence of this memorandum also is that, as you know, the school, you have a policy on bidding out, and both phases exceed the ten thousand dollars or greater, by policy requires that we receive three bids from three separate vendors, and in this case, my request to you is to waive that requirement, because in my estimation that this, this system that is being purchased and installed is proprietary to this, there is only, there are only two vendors in the state of New Hampshire that are added-value vendors that provide this particular security hardware and software. I actually spoke with the, one of the owners of the company that are located, I believe, out in Wisconsin, and I asked for his recommendation, because he did tell me, I asked how many vendors there were that provided this service of installation of his program, and there are only two, and to which he recommended only one. So for us to go out to bid and obtain three other bids for this same service, and as you can see, the same vendor is doing the lock, and they're able to utilize existing wiring, that was a big concern of ours, was it gonna cost us a lot over and above to do specialized wiring, depending on the type of equipment we brought in, and this particular individual that came and gave us the quote, so that they can utilize all the existing wiring that we have for the current program here at CHS, and that's why you see a little up price in the, in the GMS and the LMS pricing, because they're gonna need to run some new wiring, because we do not have a Forbes inter, external access program there.
And the company itself and the platform appear to be a good combination of things that are upgradable over time.
Yeah.
They're modular in nature, and the company appears to be well-positioned.
Yeah.
Their most notable client being.
Columbine.
Columbine High School.
They have specialized in the area, they first started out specializing in the area of prison correctional facilities, and they have branched out, obviously, over the years with the need requirement in public sector, specifically in schools.
Was there a motion to suspend DJB and allow a sole source for the security bid?
Make that motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post? Abstain.
Thank you.
Just a quick comment. Archie sent me yesterday a document from the State Department, and it is a document that we're gonna forward to Safety Committee, among other places, but it's the state of New Hampshire Department of Safety, Individual Whole-Limb Security, and Emergency Management, the Physical Security Self-Assessment Guidelines for School Buildings, three K through twelve. And in a relatively quick read, it appears that the items that we've targeted align, and that are being funded in this, align very well with their guidelines. So I know it was rushed, and I know we were concerned that we were making unform decisions, and while we may not have had as much time and information as we wanted, there's nothing in any of those expenditures that are not supported by these documents, that was reassuring to know.
And when are we having our next safety meeting?
That's a good question.
Sooner rather than later.
That's when you tell John it was last, yesterday, and he missed it.
Who was the SAU rep on that?
You mean the J, the J manager of the house committee?
Safety meeting, building committee meeting.
Oh, the LSP building.
But I'm also the SAU's rep on the safety meeting.
That is June seventeenth.
I'd like to have a meeting with the, the community committee before that meeting.
Aren't you chair of that?
I am, I, but.
So don't you set the meeting dates in the agenda?
Since the two administrators are the ones that need to be there, a long wait.
Just checking, we didn't have this problem when Trish was in charge, we knew when the meetings were.
The Building and Grounds Committee?
Yeah.
Yes, actually, I, we were talking today about scheduling one in June.
Right, right to the end of the year, yep.
Food service?
This will be quick, Mr. Chair. Part of, obviously, one of the areas we look, have been looking at a little bit is food service organization. We ran into an issue, it was a personality issue, obviously, which I can't elaborate on, but it had to do with the supervision of food service technicians that work at any one of the three locations during the day. As you know, we have a director of food service, which is Hilda Lawrence, and she's located here at CHS. Then we also have three lead, what are called by job description, and I provided you a copy of each, a lead food service technician, then we also have food service technicians. And basically, unbeknownst even to the lead food service technicians, they are not by job description supervisors, they provide no supervision during the day, it's not in their job description, but yet, at the end of the year, the director of food service will go to the leads and get input from each one of the lead food service techs on the performance of the food service techs, which, as you know, probably isn't the best way to be handling that. We also ran into an issue of the lead food service tech trying to provide that supervision when folks, there were a couple that knew that they, you're not my boss, I've read the job description, and it's not on there. But frankly, it's a, it was a huge gap, because if we're at, over at GMS, and we're providing But frankly, it's a, it was a huge gap, because if we're at, over at GMS, and we're providing, we got folks coming in on a part-time basis, we got a lead food service tech, that lead has to be the eyes and the ears, if you will, of the director, to know what's going on over at that school. Hilda, from time to time, needs to fill in if we've got a call out at LMS. We've got CHS here with the lead. So, basically, what I'm recommending here tonight is for us to make a change to the job description, which I've provided you a copy of. Michelle was kind enough to italicize the areas of the change, which is item number one and two, which basically provides supervisory responsibility for the day-to-day operations of their assigned locale. And two is to, by job description, provide input to the director of food service during that individual's annual performance appraisal of the food service techs. So that, so that now it's in writing that the director of food service can obtain and is instructed to obtain the input from the lead. So, the lead really had, brings some definition to it. It's very similar to our custodial second shift staff here at CHS. We have a lead custodian that provides the supervision of the custodial staff here at the high school during that second shift, three to 11:00. And the other piece to that is there is a financial cost associated with that. Typically, with the custodial staff, we provide a 10% differential for the lead custodian from the other custodians, but I think in this case, we would, I would recommend maybe a 5% next year, and then we can look at an additional 5% to bring them common ground with custodials.
That would be funded out of the food service budget and not the general-
That's correct. Yep.
And our food service budget this year ran a surplus, slight surplus on top of providing some badly needed new equipment.
Right. We're liking where we're coming in at food service.
Do we need to specify 18 years of age? I know we're requesting three years of experience, but we also allow the superintendent to waive that? And given that we're using slicers and other-
Right.
-equipment, that's typically restricted, age restricted? Unless, of course, you're on a farm and you're running a machine that's made up of huge discs that slice through there, if there's no age restriction there, we don't have to debate that.
Right.
As a farmer's-
I'm just asking. I know, like, if you go to, if you go to a, you know, even a deli at a grocery store and you've got to be 18 to be able to run slicers.
Right, to use the equipment, yep.
I'm just asking. And it's probably across all the food service-
Right.
-positions. I don't know that we would hire someone that was 17, but-
Right.
I would hope we would be putting somebody like that in charge.
You would hope, but one can't.
And I would hope we don't have to have a policy that legislates common sense.
I'm just asking, John.
Not with current administration.
But as the safety rep, I will ask, where this one brings to light, lift over 50 pounds, and we say assistance may be available, I think is part of the joint loss.
Right.
We should establish criteria for a two-man lift-
Right.
And put it in the job descriptions that two-man lift required.
I think we, I think actually Primex has given us that information.
But it's not in here, lifting over 50 pounds, it says rarely required, assistance may be available. It should be only, the job description should say only as a two-person lift.
Right. So, not leave it as an option, I can do this.
If somebody does it, you can say, you're-
We can have, it's probably not a bad idea-
But let Primex take a look at it.
To have Primex look at all of that, because it's so ever-changing, and as we all know, it's based on past precedents, and did somebody get hurt, and work as comp and all that, so probably a good idea that we can ask them, and they're great about that. Give them all the job descriptions, look at the physical requirements, make some changes.
As far as the food service and job shifts change and all the process and the change in hours, I mean, I'm okay with that, but if we could send it back, if you guys have Primex take a look at it, and then maybe we can vote on it next-
Next week.
Next week. I mean, I would support-
I think the concept is good.
The concept is the correct idea and cleans up-
We've got to clean the gap up.
The process up.
It's more likely to be, given everything that's going on, the second meeting in June as opposed to next-
Which I think is fine.
Yeah, whatever.
Given June where we are.
Wherever, you know, whatever you guys feel it, wherever you feel it fits. And then the other question I have is that, in this job description of, you know, is the supervisor expected to do the yearly reviews? I mean, I think you guys need to make sure that you've hammered out the exact, because-
I touched upon that, if I can.
Okay.
I'm not changing, that, the only thing that we're providing for in the job description of the lead is, is the director of food services, which is still responsible for the annual review, can go to the lead to obtain input on the, on the food service technician's performance during the year. I'm not changing the job, the job responsibility, the food service director remains the same.
So, basically, what you're saying-
That position is required to do, conduct the performance appraisals of all staff.
I understand that, but, but, so, the intention here is to only give them the day-to-day operation of what's occurring in their cafeteria on that day, not anything further than that? Is that the responsibility we're looking to have for that person?
Yes, but I want to be clear, that this, there's another gap here, that, by example, and I'm just making this up, that the director of food service provides a poor performance appraisal for a food service worker at GMS. That food service worker can look at that director of food service and say, how do you know?
You weren't there.
You're my supervisor, but you're never there. How would you know? Well, I talked to the lead.
Not in the chain.
Not my supervisor. You're my supervisor. So, that's what I'm saying, we're cleaning up-
No, 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 I understand, well, I understand, that's why I was thinking that the supervisor was having the day-to-day contact with the person. Well, I understand the director's probably responsible for doing the review, and they would do that, but the supervisor is the one that's able to say, John did a great job when he was here, but he wasn't here for half the year, whatever the story may be. So, I'm questioning whether or not, since the director has to cover three different locations, if they're truly the person who should have that responsibility. I understand they have the responsibility of completing the review, making sure it's done in that aspect, but even, even after the fact of giving this person that make her the supervisor, you're still relying strictly on what that supervisor says to be able to give any individual a, a good, medium, or bad review.
But it's uncommon, because you're really looking at, and I hear what you're saying, but that would require a global change, because our director of facilities also performs performance appraisals for people that they're not supervising. Mike, it's kind of like a frontline supervisor, where you're, you're operational supervisor, but you're not the managerial supervisor.
It's a matrix organization.
Correct.
It's always hard to be reviewed by somebody that you, that you see, if you're lucky, once every three days, and sometimes maybe once, once a week, because whatever the situations may be.
And I think we need to do some training there with, with the directors as well, the facility directors, is to get them more involved in all aspects.
I mean, I would say if the director is working the line, or working a cash register-
Many a common day she is.
And she may be, or he may be, whatever may be, that, you know, their job, that, I understand that their job is to get it, to get whatever done, done.
Right.
But at the same time, their job needs to be able to go to a location and just observe what's going on, and observing their people to see if they're working well, if they're not working well, in that, in that process. And if they're working in the process, that really is not an opportunity.
Right, I agree.
And so, if the requirements are they need to go over and do observations, then it has to be observations, not working observations, if you understand what I'm saying.
Where's her office, anyway? Is it here?
Right in the kitchen.
It's in the kitchen. Okay. How often does she actually go down to GMS and LMS?
I'm sorry?
How often does she actually go to their schools?
I don't know, just, I try to get in there in the morning, just to say hello, make sure everything's okay, and a lot of times, she's running around. I've got to go to GMS, I had a call out. One of the areas that we're going to be looking at for the next budget process is looking at our ability, or a lack of ability to hire, substitute food service workers and retain food service staff. And I think that it's not just a financial impact, it's other areas that we've got to take a look at.
So, you can bring that back into the-
Two weeks, uh, two meetings.
Two meetings?
Yeah. Thank you.
Busy the end of June.
It always fills up.
Yeah.
Budget committee, do you have some fun, Brian?
Yeah, well, I wasn't the brunt of the attack, so. Might have been probably the next meeting. A couple of things that did come from it, though, and I'm looking at the date of our next meeting, we'll probably receive May's fiscal report, and that'll probably be the 25th, Frank.
Yes, sir.
And what the budget committee is asking is that they receive that information a little sooner. I know typically that they don't receive it until we've seen it. And a couple of individuals on the committee have asked as to whether or not that can be done a little sooner, because our next meeting is on the 26th, which would mean we'd see it on the 25th, they would receive it in the morning of the 26th. So, that was not necessarily just for the next meeting, but just as a blanket statement, like, this one, they're saying, like, by the time they see the information, it'll be two months old. But what we just received this evening is really going to be useless form, anyway, come the next meeting, because they're going to receive the updated version. Another question that came up was, and I thought we touched base on it, is the communication process, if we want it to happen from the budget committee to the school board or to Frank? And, like, Frank's understanding was that it would go, I'm going to be wrong, it would come to me, it would go through their chair, then come to me, then I would go to either yourself or whoever had to go to. And I'm not sure what line of communication we want. So, like, Bill was asking questions, and then Cindy wasn't quite sure that, you know, if she should just send it off, CC me, go through her.
I don't really care how they handle it on their end, but I think having one point that it goes through here, whether it's you or me, to get to the administration is the preferred way we'd like to do it. No, I actually, I liked doing it when I was the budget committee, because at least then I was always in the loop. And I think John was the same way, everything went through John.
And that's what I, that's what I said to him, like-
At least CC you.
He did, but I said, send it to me, and I'll send it to Frank, and he was more comfortable sending it to Frank than CCing me, so.
Superintendent, I did have a meeting, I don't know if we brought your attention, with the incoming chair of the budget committee, and I thought we had resolved that, I believe it was her, interest to also have that filtered through the chair. Again, as you say, it's, that's on their end, but I, my understanding was in our meeting with-
They were going to go through their chair.
They were going to go through their chair, so she was aware of what was being requested, because you can imagine, if everyone from the budget committee is going to be emailing me, it could be some redundancy there, as well as information that I'm providing to the budget committee that is not passing through, at least the knowledge that you folks at the school board know that I'm providing that to them.
It was like, then go through their chair, then through me.
I believe that's what we had discussed, and she, I believe, just as the chair here just said, that she was interested in having it go through her, so that she was aware of and could-
I think we did talk during the midst of the budget process last year, if the initial request came through budget committee member to budget chair, our representative back to, you know, Frank, that if there were additional questions, you know, in a, in a particular area, then it would sort of CC the two chairs to getting some clarification, that it was the original request would follow the protocol.
I remember when I, when I was on the budget, and I think Derek probably did say that, basically, you just CC, when you forward something on to Frank, you just CC the chair and the superintendent, because they just need to be in the loop, in the sense that that, that you're requesting information, and as long as, I think the biggest thing for the budget committee, and that I, that I heard when I was there, we had that, they're worried about the time of response, and I, and I think their frustration is that, you know, they have a question, or they have something, and they want to ship, shoot off an email, and they want to get right back to them, well, you know, Steve may have been very good at getting that, processing it, and responding back to whoever sent that right away. You know, for many reasons, the waters have gotten muddied because of the misuse of the email process by the budget committee.
Right, and that was their concern, and that's why they're trying to streamline it.
And so, I think at the same time, that, you know, they created the monster, and it shouldn't be our job to fix it. So, I think if they go to Cindy, and Cindy sends it to you, and you send it off to Frank and copy it off at that point in time, at least at that point in time, Frank has it, and he's going to respond back, and then at that point in a long time, as long as Bill or whoever the budget committee member is, is keeping everybody, the two chairs and the superintendent and yourself in the loop, if they have a clarification on something that Frank, and at the same time, I think the expectations ought to be that once Frank gets an email, that that'd be some way for a response to occur, as long as he's in the office, within, you know, one to two days, you know, as long as it doesn't need a lot of research, but that a response to the email occur in a timely, in a timely fashion.
Another subject that was touched on, I know it's touched on before too, is they were inquiring, like, when the department heads would be there? And I know we talked about it, as far as when the departments would be there to go over to budgets, would they be there?
December.
Whether they'll be there the first day, or will they be there when they're looking at the following week?
They don't usually vote the last day anyways.
Now, we've got six months to figure that out.
I can just tell you that the budget committee themselves are, kind of like split on the two, one says they like it on the first one, the next one says they like it on the second meeting.
Well, I will tell you point blank, and I, and I talked, and I talked with Frank Byron about that. We see no reason to bring the department heads in at any time in a front front, because they don't ask questions until the second time, and then if we don't have our expert there to answer questions, they go, well, you don't understand it, you don't need it, cut it. And they've done that for the last two years. So, again, they create the problem, and they're, I remember their argument, well, we don't know what questions to ask. Who can review a budget? And if you're reviewing it before the meeting, then you should be able to ask the questions.
Because one of them is saying that I have my questions ready for the first meeting, and there are other members who say that they have more questions afterwards.
So, this, I, this is a case where you say, we're going to have them here once.
Tell it one.
Pick when you want them.
The budget committee also said they don't see a reason why they can't be there at the moment.
Yeah, well-
Then that is our choice.
Yep.
Cindy said it used to be that way, that we used to have them there, and I, I go back four years, you may go longer than me, I don't, I don't ever remember, I think we just start, when I start on the budget, the meeting-
When I was on the budget committee, they didn't go.
They didn't go, so.
That was, that was the rep and the superintendent, and the business administrator's job was to bring that forth, and then take the questions back, get the answers, and bring them back the next week, or say, send me your questions up through Tuesday night, we'll get you answers by Wednesday night, and then you have Thursday to vote.
Thursday to discuss.
Or whatever, however they get that week one.
Again, I think it all goes back to the same thing that, when Frank and I had the conversation, and I brought up the fact that I, as a school board rep on that budget committee, the frustration I feel that we come in to do a presentation on a budget, and I would expect all the questions that are necessary should be, should be, should be asked at that time if they have done their review. And the fact that they don't have their questions leads me to believe they're not reviewing the budget before we come in and present it to them. They're getting it presented to them, they're going back, they're doing a little bit of homework, and then they come back and ask the questions, whatever the questions may be, and then they vote, because the expert's not there, and I believe that times they've had, they've gotten the correct answer from the administrators and the, and the school board rep that was there, but they said, well, the expert's still not here, so we're going to make a cut. So, you know, I personally believe we don't need to send them anymore, because I think the, the information the administrators can handle and the budget committee rep, I mean, we all have, we've spent two months reviewing that budget, that we should be able to handle the discussion with the budget committee on it, but, you know, again, I'm very frustrated with the budget committee's process.
I personally don't feel that the person has to be there both nights. I can see it being there the second night, so questions can't get answered at that time, if they have more, they can ask.
I would agree with that, because that's when they ask their most questions.
Right. Well, that's when they say, like you said, well, the person's not here, so let's just go ahead and cut it. But again, on the 26th, we're going to start the process of trying to determine the tax impact or where the budget should be. And with that, Ray Peoples asked, what we should be doing is look at what people can afford, know what we need.
Who made that statement?
Ray Peoples. Again, he thinks the tax impact should be zero, there should be no tax, so.
No increase?
No, no tax. That was clarified, that was clarified. That was clarified, that was clarified in the minutes.
No, no tax at all?
Yeah.
So we should have no school budget?
We should have no taxes.
No taxes.
There should be donations.
Ray must have fell off the train.
What was the real estate?
Lot prices will soar.
We asked him for clarification, that he thought it was an error in the minutes, but it was clarified, he clarified, no, that it should be a zero impact.
Zero impact? As in, our budget should not impact the taxes any higher than they are?
Well, Cindy had asked, what, what do you think the tax impact should be, and Ray said, well, I would always set it zero, that's where I would like it to be.
Okay. He said, you know, ask around town, people aren't getting raises, so. The budget should be more or less like what we can afford.
This, this is also after they had their discussion about coming in with a set percent increase that they would accept.
Right, that's basically what they're going to start working on the 26th, just come up with.
I make a motion that the School Board tells the Budget Committee that we will not accept whatever cap they put on the budget in advance.
Second.
I was really hoping that one was going to die. Discussion? Yeah, let's get them to repeat it, Michelle, in case they didn't.
I lost that one.
We will not accept any cap that they put on our budget.
Okay. Discussion? I was going to just informally suggest that we can choose to do whatever we want with that recommendation.
Well, I just want that, you know, that you guys can tell them, tell them no, but I think we should let them know that.
I think it's out of their statutory authority to do that.
I agree.
If you look in the RSA, I don't see in the RSA where it says the Budget Committee shall tell the School Board or the town what their max budget increase should be. Other comments, discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Same? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. York.
You're welcome. Thank you, Byron, you're welcome.
Can I be excused? Don't think they want to be there.
They can certainly go through and do the analysis. All, all I wanted to say was if we send you that budget, will you accept it without reviewing? I think the answer was no.
They've already said no, that they would still look at it and cut where they need to.
Well, they don't need to cut if we met their number, right?
I'd agree.
We digress and speak of things that.
You're applying reason where?
I was just. Anything else, Brian?
That's about it. I'll probably have more next, than the next meeting.
No, not for the next meeting.
After the next meeting.
Okay, not till July? Because you don't, because you don't meet with them until after our next two meetings.
We'll see if you're getting emails.
The 26th of June.
Yeah, we meet the 25th.
25th.
So, well, I, I'm pretty sure that Frank could send the budget information out on the 25th during our meeting, and they could have.
That's what Steve used to do.
Steve used to hand it out to us and push the send button. Perk!
We have two recommendations, the first is War Horse, which is a nonfiction book for grade eight. It's a, it's a story told from the point of view of a horse actually fighting in World War I.
Is that a movie?
I think it was a movie, yeah. Perk had actually at first sent that back for more info, because we were confused but why there's a World War I book in eighth grade, because we didn't realize they were studying that, but it was actually chosen not for the history reference, but more for the book itself, for its critical thinking and voice, and it's a, it's a good match for grade eight, it kind of fits in the middle of the lexile range there. The second one is Transition to Algebra, which is a, I think this is going to be used in the Algebra on Daily for Freshmen. In the past, they've been just kind of using the same book that the eighth graders have already been using, and they're finding that it's not working as well, because it's basically the students feel like they're seeing the same thing again. This, this new curriculum is designed a little bit differently, rather than it being one giant book of just Algebra I, it's actually broken up into the units or modules like Jack Harris was explaining earlier, so it might be a unit on like addition or multiplication, and that way the students can kind of take that unit and work on that, and not have to worry about the other stuff that they're not working on. Julie thinks that will kind of, will help a lot when it comes to the Algebra on Daily stuff.
Anybody have any questions for Derek on the?
I can still buy some books. I didn't read War Horse, I was behind on my, I was a little bit behind, I was still reading Pi, which was a fourth grade book from the last time around.
It was a little tough for you, Derek? I was struggling.
It was tough, it was actually a very good book, Pi, I recommend it highly. I haven't read War Horse yet, the Transition to Algebra stuff I did see, it makes sense that we kind of break it up in different units. It's a, it's a good strategy, especially for the kids that, you know, are struggling, I think it kind of breaks it down into smaller chunks, for once, sometimes I analyze it out, did you have a feeling on what went into that?
The Transition to Algebra, that's, that's only going to be necessary for a few years, though, isn't that correct? Because with the fact that the eighth graders are going to be expected to be doing Algebra I, we should be, and our expectation is to be having geometry in freshman year, that there should be less and less students having to take Algebra in the first grade.
I think while that percentage of students who are able to complete Algebra in grade eight successfully, at a level that'll allow them to continue on that trajectory, will increase, I think that there will always be a need for some students to take something else before they take Algebra to high school. That number should go down.
So if we're, if we're expecting Algebra in the eighth grade.
Okay, but we're expecting it for some students, we're not, we're really not expecting it for all.
Well, what will they be taking? I mean, we have the seventh graders taking seventh and eighth grade math next year. Okay, so what will they be taking in eighth grade?
Only the, only, there's only two classes of the five will be taking seventh and eighth together, remember, and they'll be taking Algebra I in grade eight. Three of the classes will be taking grade seven math, and then grade eight math the next year, and then Algebra one in. The hope is, is that the next step that we start to see is over half the kids would be able to take Algebra I in eighth grade.
Okay, but I thought, but I thought the transition, so when are you going to do the tran, at some point in time? Because I thought the, the idea was that the seventh and eighth grade was to put, and then to put everybody into a cycle of expectations with more rigor, so like, even like the sixth graders would be taking seventh grade math next year.
No, the only, the only change projected for next year is that the students in grade seven will either be in an accelerated model, they're going to take great, all of grade seven math in the first half, and all of grade eight math in the second half, and the title that we talked about for that course today was going to be, you know, grade seven slash eight math, so complete the entire middle school curriculum by the end of grade seven and take Algebra I in grade eight. The other group, are the group who struggle in grade seven math at grade seven, and so they would be taking grade seven math, but like Algebra I daily, they would be having 90 minutes a day of math, and not back to back, so they would do math, go take another class or two, and then take math again the second time. So their instruction is going to be, you know, our normal year of instruction at grade level, and the other half of the year is going to be below grade level to backfill all of that information, so that they'll be able to be successful in grade eight math the next year, and then Algebra I next year.
And then is the, so then is the everyday geometry, is that what we're going to be teaching the freshman students that have completed Algebra?
If we, if this sequence works, the need for the everyday geometry should go away, and it could go away as early as the year after next. So we have, we have some students who will be in everyday geometry this year, who may be moving up, but after that, you've got kids who will have the opportunity for, who had the opportunity for everyday Algebra, or next year everyday pre-Algebra or Algebra. So the year after 14, 15, you know, the, the notion that we need double time in geometry because kids have not, don't have the Algebra background should essentially disappear.
And is the, is the high school gearing their curriculum based on the conversations that the, that the expectation is that they, that students graduating are going to need four years of math? And not Algebra, not pre-Algebra as counting as one, but Algebra, Geometry, Algebra II, and whatever, you know, based on the thing you gave us, they need to be able to do statistics now.
One of the things that Perk's also looking at, and we're going to address it further on the summer, is creating like a, a K to 12 program for everything, so it's not so disjointed. We're getting there with math, but they want to, she wants to go back and do it from kindergarten through 12th grade and figure out what the, the whole program looks like.
Quite honestly, I think every high school in the state, they're still going to have, 20 years from now, kids who are entering grade nine, who are not ready to do Algebra I, regardless of, of the quality of the program and, and the time, there's some students who.
Who struggle with it.
Who struggle with it. So there should be a shading of sections. What I'm looking for two years out is that we could have three classes of the five in grade eight that are legitimately be, going to be able to be successful in, in Algebra I. That would be a great shift from 40% of our kids to 60% of our kids doing Algebra in, in grade eight. Progress after that will probably come a little bit slower.
Any other questions on the Perk recommendations? I think we agreed at the last meeting, we'd take these in both, unless there was somebody wanted to separate, went out for a particular reason, deal with it individually, or send it back, so. If there's not, we can have a motion for, to accept the War Horse and Algebra recommendations. Make that motion.
Okay.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you. Onto old unfinished business, Student Activity Fund Manual Draft 1.
This was a packet that was included at your last meeting, and just to give you some highlighting background, again, the 2013 financial audit did recognize some exposure in the student activity account management of same, and how, in particular, it discussed deposits being not verified at the school district level, and the board had expressed some issue with overall student activity funds. So what I've provided to you here, and I'll go through it very briefly, the first section is the current cash balance report for all three, three schools, Campbell High School, LMS, and GMS, and it provides a listing of each and every account. As you can see, at Campbell High School, we have 123 student activity funds, provide you with beginning cash balance, receipts, disbursements, adjustments, and the ending cash balance, and these reports are now signed off as being reviewed by the principal, so they initial off and sign off, and I've given you a copy of all three schools for the month of April. The second piece, which, when the auditors are in-house to conduct the 2014 financial audit, will be provided with a copy of my corrective action plan, which basically spells out how I addressed their finding that we had some issues that we needed to correct in the student activity funds. And the, the next piece by example I provided you with is my attempt to determine if in fact some of these accounts are truly, or if all the accounts are truly student activity fund accounts. And as you can see, by example, if you look at the, the student activity accounts for CHS, there are, again, 130, 123 accounts, which there were five prongs, if you will, that I asked each principal to answer either yes or no to the question, A, was it earned by students, received by students, used for the benefit of students, contained only student monies, and managed by a faculty or staff advisor, which is the CPA recommended eligibility test for any student activity account. As you can see, we're still in the process of some of these accounts to identify if they are truly student activity funds. For instance, number two, principal's account, that is not a student activity account by definition from the CPA external auditors. That is what is referred to in accounting as a convenience account, that being monies provided to the principal to spend at, at his or her discretion, should not be an account that is in the student activity account. It shouldn't be co-mingled with student activity funds, it should be set up as a separate account to which school administration, the school board, we have no authority nor oversight responsibility for that. Those are monies that are donated, if you will, to the school principal to spend at his or her discretion. Some of these.
Were you donated by parents or anybody?
Yeah.
Frank, the library account.
Well, let me, I'll get to that one.
Yeah, I'm just wondering, okay, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, that's okay. For instance, library account. That's referred to as a budgetary account, meaning that, and you probably could make the same evaluation of the parking fee account and the school bus pass account. Those are budgetary accounts that are typically collected by the school administration, in this case at the high school, for lost books. So if you lose your book, you're charged $5, that goes to this particular student activity account. At the end of the year, there are no disbursements that, that should be come out of those accounts, they are swept out and put into the general fund. That's why they refer to, and that happens here with the library account, whatever monies are collected, they are swept out.
But that's a convenience.
That's referred to as a convenience account. The monies are held, if you will, by the, by the school for the benefit of the district general fund.
So we've collected $1,390 this year?
I don't know, because I haven't looked at that particular account.
Well, I, you just.
If the, if the concept is working the way it should, that should be zero balanced at the end of the year. Correct.
Well, beginning cash was $1,390, so I have to believe that it, it hasn't had any receipts, it doesn't look like put to it, so, so we haven't lost any, any books, which I guess is a good thing.
Or no one's reading books.
Well, that's one possible conclusion.
I was, I was trying to be nice.
So again, at the board's concern, while it wasn't expressed in the audit, it was obviously expressed by the board, that some of these accounts truly do not pass the test of a student activity fund, and as such, should not be listed as student activity funds.
So when you're asking for additional info. What additional info do you need? Will it be, I mean, I mean, I'll just, you know, class pictures or something like that? If it says, has a couple no's, and then, and then a yes, and it says it's still under review, is that because they don't, they're trying to figure out how to make it a?
Well, no, not, not.
Student account?
Basically what I'm telling them is it doesn't pass my test, and if you want to give me additional information.
Okay, so this is additional information from you?
From the principal.
To you?
To me, correct. So basically, as you can see, there are a good number passed, there are a good number reviewed, and there are a good number of other. We did the same for LMS, and we did the same for, while it's not included in your packet, GMS as well. So we're in the middle of that process, and I'm looking to conclude it by the end of June, so that you folks can see a clean list of true student activity funds, or a clean list of those that are convenience funds that are, that are not to be included in the student activity, or those that are budgetary, that you so, take the recommendation that they are budgetary, and you should see those swept into the general fund at, by the end of every year. And then at the end, at the beginning of the, the next fiscal year, you should see those with a zero beginning balance, because they were swept into the general fund. That's typically how the system works.
Does that include parking permits and bus tickets?
That would be my, that's ultimately going to be my recommendation, yes.
So the other thing that you have to be aware of is that those monies that are in those accounts also fall under, at New Hampshire RSA 471C, abandoned property law. So if you have accounts there that have had no activity, and this would be class accounts, I would imagine, for five years, that is now considered abandoned property. It is.
I'm going to respectfully disagree with you.
Well, I mean, I understand it, but that's what the RSA says.
Okay, well, if you look on page one of the proposed student handbook, student activity fund, and this comes directly, this isn't my language, this comes directly from the CPA and accounting, using accounting laws, that the school district is simply the agent for, and a custodian of those funds from the student activity. For the, for instance, class of 2014, once they graduate, we have no legal responsibility nor right to retain those monies, and importantly. And importantly, if something were to happen to that money, we are not covered under our bond. Okay, so where I disagree, I don't disagree on the standpoint of if something's held here without any activity over a year, but what we should be doing by practice with the class of 2014 is going to that class, class president or class treasurer and say, okay, you have X amount of dollars in your account. Where do you want us to send the check? Because once you graduate, we have no fiduciary responsibility, nor are we bonded to keep that, that money here. Again, by example, our second shift custodian is a graduate of CHS. He asked me a couple of months ago, whatever happened to our class gift? And I said, what was your class gift? He said, well, we donated the balance of our account to go towards an energy efficient enhancement here at the high school. I said, that's pretty cool. He said, yeah, we wanted to do solar panels, but we found out they was too expensive. We didn't have that much money, so we just decided we'd leave it at, well, what do you think happened?
It's sitting there.
Sitting there. Yep. And again, we have no custodial responsibility for that money because that class is, they are no longer students of the district and consequently, we're not bonded for that. So, if something were to happen to that money and a claim be made, it's gonna be up to the district's responsibility to find out what happened.
I think we should ask Gordon to clarify. No offense, Frank.
We can do that.
The RSA versus what's, what the condition is right now and how do we get out of it?
Well, basically, it says, basically-
It's our property.
It says, one example is when a financial institute holds your money in an account. In this case, we're that financial institute, even though we're not, we are holding the money.
No, we're not, it's in, it's in an account at a bank.
But my, my point is it doesn't become abandoned.
Actually, it is because it's our account or we're responsible for that account.
Okay, I, I don't know if we need to argue tonight. I think we need to ask Gordon-
Be careful.
Yeah, because, because it says here, basically, it says here, if nothing has happened for the account for a period of five years, the institute presumes it is abandoned. So, in this case, both the bank and, and the school could come to that conclusion. I mean, if nothing, if it's sitting in a bank account, that nothing occurred, the bank is gonna determine that it's that. But if we're putting money in another account and that money's there, then that, that's never going to happen with, at the bank.
But, so this is one account. This is our, that's our ledger.
So, are we have, so do we have 123 different accounts, numbers?
No, we have one account-
With all this money?
With a ledger-
With subledges.
That has 123 different line items for plus minus.
Okay.
So, to the bank, it's not a dormant account.
That's correct, so they're never going to, they're never going to see that. So, but we know it is, 'cause it basically says for a period of five years, the institute presumes it is abandoned. At this point, the institution reports or admits it to the state treasurer, but it's our responsibility to try to fix the problem. In this case, we would have to contact the student officers, whoever they were, president, vice president, treasurer, secretary, and try to find out what to do with whatever that money is. But aren't they normally directed by their, by the classes?
You have it in your board policy that after seven years, it's at, it can be distributed at the discretion of the, of the building principal?
So, we're, we're not gonna solve it tonight. Let's ask, let's ask Gordon to weigh in on the legal status of the accounts and how do we get out of-
It, it only impacts those accounts that have an expiration date, such as the class of 2014.
So, that's fine.
Yep.
Let's say there's an RSA, the board has a question, you can debate with him whether it's a le, a valid question.
No, I don't, it's easy.
But it costs us money, so please be brief if you do that.
I'll be brief.
And then say, can you give us an opinion on whether this statute applies to our student activity accounts?
Gotcha.
And then, how do we deal with the 2009 to 2013 accounts?
Yep.
What's our legal requirements or what are we legally able to do-
Right.
-with that money?
Right.
And then come back.
Well, by the RSA, you try to get it back. If you can't give it back to them, you then have to give it to the state. The state will hold it for three years and then the state will disburse it back to the county to offset taxes in the general fund.
Lovely.
Okay, that, but that does, that means that, but the students still claim that money. So, 20 years from now, they could come back and say, we had $5,000.
We want it for a reunion.
We want it back. Now, they'll have to go to the state, the state will have to give it to them because the state had the money even though they gave it back. That's what the RSA says.
Why don't we just try contacting the past presidents of the class?
I don't know that they have any standing to do anything with the money.
With the money.
No, but they can open an account probably under that class name.
That's exactly what they need to do.
Right.
We would distribute to them and then it's their responsibility, again, they would open up a class of 2014.
But you see, once they're, once they're graduating, they're no longer the president of the class of 2009.
So, that's what's interesting, that's why I think-
So, they no longer can dictate where the money goes.
Well, they're still a treasurer.
I'm directing.
No, there's not, there's nobody. The next time, it'd be, normally the, at the five years-
Yeah.
And I remember when, because I worked on the five-year reunion. We went back and we said, how much money do we have? And we used all the money that was left for a five-year class reunion. But that was way before all these different laws came into effect.
I always assumed that the president and treasurer and those individuals stayed on, but they're the ones who like ran the five-year reunion, the 10-year reunion, so they're still responsible.
Well, I think typically at every union, they nominate a committee for the next five years. It's not the same people. So, you go to your five-year or your 10-year and then there's some kind of, these people are nominated or take it over. But in any case, we're not gonna solve it here. Let's get Gordon to weigh in on what we have to do legally, what we can do legally, and then maybe by the end of the June meeting, we can have a plan laid out.
If I can just briefly comment on, I'm just going to use the parking permits as an example. I think we have to be careful if we're going to handle the, the monies collected in a different way. And, and I'm perceiving it because I really don't know that much about this kind of stuff. I see that kids were told that the money that they paid into the parking permits was going to go towards student activity fees. And now, if that's not what it's gonna go to-
Actually, I'm not sure they were ever told that.
Well, that was my understanding and I had two kids go through the high school and that's what my understanding was that, that $100 parking fee every year was, was going towards the student activity fees.
My understanding from Dr. Cutler was that the first year that that happened was 11 and 12, and then it was done at a one-time basis. But the, the, it was the-
Okay, I'm not, I'm just not sure that it's clear with everybody who's paying that. I, but I think we have to, if we're going to change how we manage that, just in case other people out there have the same understanding that I have, I think we would start with the newest class coming in and say that the parking fees are, you know, not student activity fees, it's going to go toward-
The general fund.
-the general fund or, or to be used as, as necessary. I, I think we have to, I, I just, I know, I, I, I know that there's some, there's some commentary on that.
Some of those fees in the last two years, this year and last year, were used for student activities-
Mm-hmm.
-and the year before, but it was not treated as a student activities fund.
Okay.
It was, it was used for a variety of things, some of which was student activity.
I don't dispute that that's what happened with them, but just my understanding as a parent who was paying that was that it was a student activity.
I, I think that the, when we instituted the policy, that was not the direction from the school board. That may have been a very liberal interpretation of the direction of the school board at that time. And should not have any point in time that, I, I did, at no point in time in that conversation did the school board vote to make that money part of a student activities fund. I mean, Michelle can probably go back and pull the minutes and clarify whether that's right or wrong, but I do not believe there was any conversation of that money being part of a student activity fund. It was supposed to be-
Should have said, be saying about the bus tickets also.
Same with the bus tickets. I mean, the bu, I mean, it was, the, all we did was balance out that cost with the expectations that it was coming back to the district. It was not managed in that process. And now, it may have been an easier sell-
This works.
-that that's how it was going to be handled because we went from $10 to $100.
I thought you were pressing.
You didn't hesitate. Well, you know, last year you paid $10 as a junior, this year as a senior, you paid $100.
I'm, I'm not disagreeing either with the perception that these are used for that fund for, and I'm not disagreeing with your, with your statement that we need to address with the reality of what people think that their money is going to be, just as an example.
We, the fee went to 100 with, in the year we were gonna lose the state money.
Right.
And we said, well, let's balance it out for the kids that are paying for the bus. You should pay the same park here and you, you don't have to pay either. You can walk, you can ride your bike, you can get a ride, you can do whatever. And that, we would use that money, albeit was expected to be $10,000 or $12,000 total to offset part of that $2 million loss. And then, we didn't lose the $2 million and as I think John said, there was an interpretation that, well, we don't need the money for the general fund, let's augment the student activities and do some different things. It's been expected that it's that way, not, but I agree, we should communicate that the parking fee and the bus fees reimburse the district for the cost of the buses and the cost of maintaining the parking lot.
Which makes sense, but I just wanna, just wanna make sure that everyone is on the same page when it comes to what those monies are worth.
Because I would argue if it was truly a student activity fund, the bus tickets should only be, ever been used for busing a student somewhere. You collect it for a purpose-
Right.
And you expend it for that same purpose.
Right.
And parking tickets likewise, it would have to be, have spent somehow for the student benefit of a parking lot, which-
And they would have to direct-
Well, move the snow so they can park.
I was just gonna say.
And they would have, by, again, the true definition-
Describe-
They would need to direct where those expenses are.
You've used your money to throw plow, so you'll have to shovel out your spot and protect it with a cone.
They don't look like Cambridge, everybody will bring that.
Also have to get sweeping.
What?
Oh, yes, and sweeping, that's right.
Just to go down that road, that's, that's the argument that, well, the discussion I had with a parent that was upset that we were gonna, the school board was gonna take that money away and that was used for speakers. And I said, well, if they're using it for speakers, they shouldn't be because it was money collected for parking, it should be expended for parking or for buses. You know, then, the perfect thing came to mind is if we collected all this money for bus tickets and we needed a bus to send the first team somewhere?
We had the money.
Why didn't we use that money? There's whatever in the, it's listed for the, for the bus.
Mm-hmm.
And, and, and I would agree that if it sits in their account for the year to be used in that process, but it shouldn't be used, it shouldn't be used, like, I'll use an example of the trip to New York. Okay, they rent a bus, so it should not be used to re, pay for the rental of the bus so the cost of the trip goes down. And that, I mean-
No, I agree.
But, 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 you know, the robotics team needed to go get on a bus to go to Missouri, then that would have been a legitimate use of it.
I, I think there's pretty much consensus around where we need to get. I, I think you just need to figure out how to get there from where we are right now.
Need, need to get there from here.
There's, there's almost, there's $9,100, $9,200 on the bus ticket line item right now.
I, I've never seen a school, quite frankly, with 123 student activity accounts.
I would encourage the reduction of those things to about a dozen.
I, I can tell you that the, the administrative assistant that handles the 123 accounts would be very pleased to hear that as well.
Yeah.
This is, this is computerized, by the way. The report that you see on the cash balance is we do have a software program specifically for student activity funds.
I'm glad it's not being kept on an Excel spreadsheet.
No.
And somebody's-
All ledger cards.
On a ledger card, somebody's hard drive.
Yeah.
Hard drive died, we have no idea where the money came from. Okay, which takes us to-
Can I just say, Frank, I appreciate that you've tackled this issue?
Thank you. I appreciate you brought my attention to tackle. It's been-
Maybe a lot of work to do.
If you don't get to it, if it doesn't comes back until July, then I understand because it, I think it's a-
I'd like to bring it back in June, just so we have it.
I would, I'd like to have it resolved before we go into the new year, but uh-
I would too. And we can clean it up over the summer before we start the school year. We'll work our best.
So, next up is the policy revision.
Uh, why don't we hold on that because a lot of the policy revisions-
Beautiful, move on, I like it. I'm behind.
Fine, I won't give you any more reasons.
No, that's fine. I think you get everything in line and then-
Yeah, and then we'll look at the policy, make sure it aligns with the handbook. Yep.
Uh, non-affiliated salaries for FY15.
Yeah, I'm going to get that. Um, this is for the board's consideration. By way of background, again, as you know, the board did vote on a salary increase for administrators of 1%, of which is, is on the memorandum at a cost of, okay, get down there, $12,253. The board has, again, by way of background, the, the board adopted, the district adopted a, a salary step and longevity schedule for staff that are not part of the teachers' union. And, and again, over the years, if you were to look at those board members that have been on for a number of years, the board has voted either to grant the step as per the schedule or they have adopted, for instance, as last year, adopted an off-schedule increase of 1% and no step increase or longevity adjustment. The year before that, the board voted, as you can see, I won't read the whole thing, something again, different than the step schedule. So, the recommendation that we put forth here this evening would be for the board's consideration of a 1% increase and a longevity adjustment for those that are qualified for the longevity. And as you can see, the cost of that is, is for the non-affiliated hourly staff, the rate adjustment, that's their hourly rate, would cost the district $20,700 and longevity adjustments would cost the district $1,728. And there are a number of staff that are not affiliated that are salaried. Those, those increases would cost the district $2,451 for a total cost of $24,880 annualized.
And the reasoning for not doing a step since a step was in the default budget?
Correct.
No, you're not proposing a step.
Because it, we're in the default budget.
Even though the step was budgeted for in the default budget?
Right, correct.
How much is a step?
And, and the 1% for the administrators was not in the default budget, yet we've already granted it.
Correct.
Already, well, we will be granting it, right?
Previously approved a 1%. I'm just asking.
Oh, you approved it in the operating budget that failed, right? Or have we already approved it regardless?
I'm sorry.
I read that, that we've already approved it.
You have not approved this?
No, but we've approved the 1%-
For the administrators, you have.
Administrators.
How much is a step, do you know, if I have?
Uh, dollar-wise, I'm not, well, it, this represents, wanna be about, it's, it would, I'm sorry?
I see some of the positions don't have steps. The second group, the non-affiliated salary- Oh, yeah, I know those, I know they don't have.
Well, this, typically a step is approximately 3% and this, the $20,000 represents 1%. But it would be lower than that because not, some of them would max out if you looked at it.
Gotcha.
So, if I can ask, where did $60,000 go?
Specifically?
You're clearly recommending to reallocate that money somewhere.
Well, it has been reallocated in your proposed and adopted 2015 budget.
I guess, I, I have a problem with the people at the top end of the pay scale getting a 1% and people that had a step budgeted not getting what was budgeted, but yet were granting a 1% out of budget.
Mm-hmm.
My two cents.
Mm-hmm.
But I will abstain from this vote. Because my wife is on the step scale for non-salaried individuals.
And just a point of clarification too, the 1% is based on the rate less the longevity. So, if you have someone who, last year, their hourly rate was the rate plus the longevity, just again, by way for the new members, longevity, I believe, starts at 15 cents per hour increase and goes incrementally, or 20-
25.
25 and then goes to 35 and then a 60 cents, I believe, per hour.
It goes 25, 30, 45.
Thank you.
And I believe we currently have people who have been eligible for longevity, but they've been on hold-
Right.
-to be enacted.
Right.
So, longevity, that's like a one-time payment?
It's a bump.
It's a bump in your hourly rate, right. But the 1% is not inclusive of the longevity?
I hate longevity. I mean, I'd rather us move steps, I'd rather us- I hate longevity. I mean, I'd rather us move steps, I'd rather us-
Makes it confusing.
It does. You should try calculating it. Because then if you got someone going up incrementally, you've got to only cost out the incremental piece of that.
I mean, with the teachers, we drop the bottom step, add the top step in.
Yeah, that's easy.
Yeah.
Whether, whether, whether it's, whether it's on this, these pay scales, the teachers' pay scales, the idea of longevity is just, it's, it's just fundamentally wrong in that, in that process, so.
Thank you for sticking around. Not that that's what it is, but that's how it's interpreted by the public.
But it shouldn't be. What it should be is that the steps continue to, to, to move, and then they continue to grow. And they continue to earn, whether it be a step or a half-step or whatever the process be, because they're staying here longer. Not because they've reached the ceiling and now we have to give them a longevity, because we're not moving our steps. And, and that's, again, I think that, that's, I think not moving your steps is incorrect, or, you know, and I think we're, maybe we worked out a pretty good process to be able to make those adjustments moving forward. But, but at the same time, we kept longevity, and I, and, you know, which again, brings us back to that, that fight of, why move the steps if you're going to give longevity, and which, you know, they'll make more money moving the steps than they'll ever make on longevity.
Are the individuals earning the longevity also receiving a 1% increase?
You're adjusting the scale.
Yes, yes.
So why don't we just eliminate the longevity, then? If people just receive a 1%, you want to have that right across the board.
Or are you granting longevity to people that are not qualified?
Who are now qualified, yeah.
It's someone that got to the top step but hasn't qualified.
Then we're going to give them 1%.
I'm just saying that-
Longevity is actually part of the plan. Yes. It's not, that's right, it's not, it's not an add-on, it's, it is the plan.
What, do we remove it now?
I don't think we're in a position to make that decision.
I think, I think Gordon would say that you would have to do that and give them an option to-
It's a change of work conditions.
Yeah, deal with it.
So you, you would have to-
We would have to-
There'd have to be due notice of that, yeah.
Yeah, we would have to vote and adopt a new pay scale.
Right. You, you can, as the, as the board has done in the past, you can, you can agree and vote to just grant the 1% off-step. In other words, you're not going to, you're not going to impose the step increase this year, you're just going to grant the 1%. So it's, it's an off-schedule, if you will, increase.
How much, do we know how much longevity comes to? Is it a 1%? Or is it more than that?
Depends on how much someone makes.
Yeah, it depends on where they're at. Yeah. Because it's, it's a flat, a flat amount. Yeah, it's a set, it's a set of hours. Different positions. It's an increase per hour.
Somebody could make $18 an hour, but 1% is only 18 cents. So longevity would be more.
Right.
Gotcha.
I would recommend to the board that, first, that I, I think the 1% is, is the minimum, the 1% on longevity is the minimum that I would recommend to the board, in terms of fairness to people across all of the, the aspects. And there are some of these salary ranges where we're going to go back and reset. We know that we did a, a, analysis of several of these positions and found out where we were competitive, where we were not. We made some changes in the, in the food service piece. The non-affiliated salary group, this, this second group, is a small group of people, but they're professional people who, to meet the minimum requirement for creation, pretty much have to be a master's degree. And cursory look at, at what they've gotten compared to, to either teachers or other non-affiliates, which show that they've fallen behind in the last while. And there's some confusion about how they're paid, because past practice has been to put them on an amount of money equal to a position on the teacher's salary scale. And people forget that they're not on the teacher's salary scale, and they don't get steps when teachers get steps, they don't get raises when teachers get raises, which further confounds the situation. So that's one that, that we'll have to do, you know, if we can, can give that group the 1% for this year, sort of status quo them. And then go back and take a look at, at where we are, and do a, do a, an analysis of, of comparable districts.
Can you give an example of a non-affiliated salary without, I guess, identifying a person? I just can't picture what it is in my head.
Social worker, school psychologist.
Okay. Yeah, I guess I assume they're on the teachers' scale.
And one more, behavior specialists. There's only four in the district.
It's interesting, because guidance counselors are on.
I'm sorry?
Guidance counselors are part of LEA, right? The social workers and psychologists are. But the social workers and psychologists-
Nurses are too.
That's interesting.
It's just the job classification.
Now, can you clarify what you said before, that we had voted for steps for this?
The default budget has steps, because it's an approved pay, pay plan. When we put forth the operating budget, I don't recall whether it had steps or not. But the idea behind approving the pay plan is that, similar to when the contract for the teachers get approved, someone gets put on the pay scale and they understand what the movement is expected to be for that each year. So it's included in the default budget. So all I was saying was, even though we didn't get the operating budget, whatever we had done, if we did a step plus 2%, which I know we didn't do, but just as an example, when you, when we were granted the default budget, I'm not going to say it was approved, because I don't think you ever approved the default budget. You defeat the operating budget.
Right.
The, the steps for the step employees, the non-affiliated step employees, were included in that budget. But there was, I don't believe there's any increase for salaried employees in the default budget, because they're not on a pay scale that's approved. They're on a range.
So these individuals weren't entitled to a step?
These, they were. The, the non-affiliated in the budget had a step budgeted.
But not in the default budget?
No, in, in the default budget.
How hard would it be to go back and find the, the step that was in the budget?
Not, not difficult at all. I, I will caution you, however, that logic, you know, the computation of the default budget, that's what we've spent the past month on, is, is reallocating, because there's a lot of things that weren't in the computation of the default budget that needs to be in the operating budget. So-
Computerized.
Yeah, like a computer app, GMS, so. The 1% acts like, you know, raising the whole scale.
Yeah.
And then, so, we've had a, a mix of, you know, 1% increases and step increases. So you've got a balance of, of, of some people who do better in one than in the other. I think it's been fairly mixed over the last four or five years. Some years with none, some years with steps, in which case people at the top will already have longevity, have nothing.
Right.
And so, 1% is, is maybe the fairest way to go at this point in time.
And what was the cost affiliated with steps for these individuals?
Well, this, the, the figure you have here, I didn't cost it out at 3%, but this is 1%. And I believe as a percentage, the steps are approximately 3%. So if you do use that as a multiplier, yeah.
But it would be less than, though, because you-
It'd be less, yeah. It'd be less, because some people are going to drop off. But that's what was in the default budget.
So my, my question would be, what is there in the budget that will allow you to move the purchase forward to this year that will put the steps back in?
Computer.
The Poodle app can be part of it. And now you're talking about the, the step schedule, the 60, approximately, let's say 60?
So what can, what, what is worth, what it costs $40,000 that the board could look to encumber with end-of-year funds of this year to pay for next year to put, make the steps full for these people?
Or you might know that next week, right?
Or is that? Is that possible?
Anything's possible. But there are a couple, I have to bring to your attention, there are a couple of problems here. First of all, we, we, and it's, we've kind of brought this late to you. We're getting into June, June's a crazy month, as far as we, we have to look to start opening up next year's budget, so that things can be audited. We're always a month ahead on the withholdings from employees, so we have to put all these personnel changes, if you will, salary changes, in, into the system. We can, we can do it in the second pay period in June, but that means we've got to double up on withholdings. So it's, and that's putting my HR hat on, which I hopefully-
Well, I would imagine that people won't be too upset they've got a 3%.
I'm not talking about the people being upset, I'm talking about a payroll coordinator and our financial side of it. No, I wouldn't anticipate, John, that anybody who's receiving a 3% increase is going to be, it's just, you know, where it can come from, if, if it's so directed by the board, we'll find it. But next year, where's the-
This is my feeling. I'm not happy with the pay plan. Okay, I've had enough conversation about that. However, it is our pay plan. And I believe that we should stick to it until we change it. However painful that is, because inevitably, we're going to get back to the same thing, where we're going to create this gap of, of wages. And then inevitably, somebody's going to come back to us and say, we did a study, and we found that this position is getting paid X, and we're paying it Y. And we'll say, well, why are we doing that? And we say, well, you know, remember back in 2014, 15, and you did, made this decision, and you did it for two or three years, and you created your own issue.
Not that we've done that before.
No, I understand that. And not that we've been for two years, you know? But at the same time, I mean, I, you know, I, I understand what you've done, and I understand the reallocating of the, of the funds and the things like that. My recommendation would be, would be to ask you to go back and take a look and see what there is in the process that can be moved, because we're going, it looks like we'll have a couple of $100,000 at the end of the year, unless you guys decide to fix everything in the district with that money. And see if there's not something that can be moved forward that falls within the boundaries of encumbrances. And see if we can create a salary process that we're not voting, that we're not voting, but we're following the guidance of the vote.
I'm going to, I'm going to make a recommendation. If I get a really dirty look from Frank, then, you know, please ignore it. I'm looking straight ahead. Camera. I, I don't think the, I mean, the current budget that the, the board looked at tonight had the $20,000 put in. By the time you change 1% to 3% for some people, take off the people who will get nothing, because they're not receiving longevity and not, and they're at the top of the scale. You're probably, might be looking at another $20,000. And for that, I think, if, if that, if the will of the board that we opposed the pay plan with the steps and longevity, then I think you just vote on that tonight. If it was the will of the board that you'd do the 1%, then I think you do that tonight. The second group, there is no pay plan.
And we have something to direct our new HR director to.
Yes.
With a smile, yes.
Well, where's the board? Where, where, I mean, how does the rest of you guys feel about that?
I agree with you.
I mean, I'll make a motion either way, but I don't want to make one that's going to die. I mean, let's, you know-
You're going to get a second.
I'm going to get a second, I understand that.
I don't think it's going to die, John, because I think it's only fair that they get what, what's in the budget.
Okay, then I'll make a motion that we follow the existing pay plan.
Second.
Discussion. What, so?
Whatever the steps are, or whatever they should be getting as part of their compensation for the coming year, that's what should be implemented.
So if you look at the snapshot here, the non-affiliated hourly would get a step.
I'm going to vote for this one, for the non-affiliated hourly employees.
Well, that was my question. What happens to the second classification?
I'll make another motion after this motion.
That was my only question.
We find lots of money now.
I'll do it in two steps.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
Uh, just for the record, so I don't get other thumbs down, my wife is not on any of these plans. I'm not voting a raise for a family member. I'll give one anyway, but what the hell.
Only if you're lucky. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Aye, I will abstain.
Can I just ask for a point of clarification? That's step and longevity, whatever that schedule calls for. Yes. Okay. That was, that was a motion. Okay, thank you.
Then I'll make a motion that we give the non-affiliated salary employees a 1% increase.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain. Healthcare.
Was that me?
It's somebody, it's not me.
I can march up the night off.
I can march up the night off.
There's no links, you can skip it.
There's no links, because I didn't do it.
Beautiful.
Motion to return.
I, I think the intent of that item was to give the folks- Two and a half hours ago, people thought that was a good thing. I'll come back next meeting and give you a, the crossover for health insurance costs. Again, the relevancy of it is, we, we're in open enrollment, so to the extent that we know the true impact for next year, probably can be delayed till probably August, I would say.
I like that. Now we're only 55 minutes behind. But we started 15 minutes late. Manifest, any questions? Do you say anything?
If I may, Mr. Chair, I meant my business report as an update on the school bus contract. It is scheduled for non-public, but we did not receive the draft contract back from our attorney. We have agreed with the transportation company and concept, and the content of the contract, the terms of, of the contract, pretty much have been agreed to, which I believe we've, we've summarized for the board. So until, I believe that will be ready. We have it, it's in house, it came in this afternoon, as a matter of fact, from the attorney. And I want to thank Michelle publicly, because we saved a lot of time. Michelle was able to take the PDF file and, however she does it, and I don't know how she does it, create a Word doc for us. So we sent it to the attorney. We saved ourselves a lot of legal fees, because they were going to have to recreate the Word doc, because we couldn't find it. We did it, and Michelle is to give, be given a lot of credit for that. So we now have the PDF marked up, and we need to find the, the Word doc, so we can, we can give it to you folks next, next meeting for, for approval. It, it should be ready to go.
PDF, Excel 11?
We, we have Adobe, but-
11?
I have a little, yeah, but I have a little trick, because it doesn't always recognize everything. So I have a little trick that I do that-
Yeah, well, 11, you should go and write it and edit a PDF.
No, we don't have, no, we don't-
I don't think we have that.
Then for 200 bucks, upgrade to 11.
We're getting something with the next copier that comes in. We're getting a, a really nice, nice program.
Second round of community input. You said your piece, you're good?
I said my piece.
That's good, Nate. Keep that up.
So we need to go into non-public session under RSA 91-A, colon, 3, Roman numeral 2, A through C. The dismissal, promotion, or compensation of any public employee-
I don't know what's happening.
-or the disciplining of such employee, or the investigation of any charges against him, unless the employee affected, one, has a right to a meeting, and, two, request the meeting be open, in which case the request shall be granted. B, the hiring of any person as a public employee. C, matters which, if discussed in public, would likely affect adversely the reputation of any person other than a member of the body or agency itself, unless, unless such a person requests an open meeting. Is there a motion?
Second.
Your call, Michelle. Garrett?
Yes.
John? Yes?
Yes.
Non-public at 9:13.
You're actually ahead of the game.
Make a motion to accept the non-public piece, notes, draft minutes.
Uh, non-public at night, I'm two minutes ahead. Look at that.